I pledge allegiance to the means things we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, I'm sorry for the divisions that we continue to create between ourselves in this community and in this nation and in this world. I know when I see, whenever I see my kids at odds with each other, I know how much it bothers my wife and I, and I can only imagine how much it breaks your heart to see your children not at peace. So we pray that you unite us. We pray for your blessing upon this community to bring us together and to strengthen us and to galvanize us toward one goal and helping this be a community that's known for love and compassion and for reaching out. And you tell us that whenever more than a couple people or two or more gathered in your name, there you are also. So we thank you that you are in this meeting with us today and guide us and lead us, and we pray for your wisdom, which you tell us that you will give us abundantly to help us make the best decisions for this community. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right. Jan, if you would, go ahead and pick a roll call.
Brandon Elmore.
Present.
Bob Laney. Nathan Conklin.
Here.
Tim Heiss.
Here.
Tito Frias.
Here.
I'm not sure what that was. Oh, okay. Consent agenda. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept.
Excuse me, what is the consent agenda?
It is just our claims and the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a first and we have a second?
I think second.
We have first and second. Jan, if you, or all those in favor, say in the box by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Okay. All right, and we've got a little bit different makeup in the agenda today because we're going to cut straight to vision corner. We've got a couple guests wanting in today. And I think you guys have handouts too that I left. Okay, good deal. Let me go ahead and downsize this, and I'm going to pull up, if technology will allow If you notice, the screen up here is obviously new. It just helps if the person operating the screen knows what they're doing. Thought I hit open.
Very cool, by the way.
Yeah, it's to help everybody be on the same page so we know what we're looking at. There we go.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to put the agenda up there for weeks. We're not going to have it.
You know what? That's a great, great point. Absolutely. There we go. All right. What I'd like to talk to you in the next few minutes about, and we've got a couple guests again to assist, one in particular that's played a, well, they've actually both played very significant roles, but one that knows he's going to be speaking to this. Vision Corner is actually the, what some people call the big green monstrosity downtown, what was the Apothecary Building. I grew up buying baseball cards there, and my parents and us would get our prescriptions filled there. Well, this building has a rather deep history to it, and it also represents the very center of our community. It is literally the heart of our downtown, and it's really hard to miss when you're sitting at the intersection up here. And so I said when I ran for office, my platform was simple. If I got voted in, this is what I was going to stick to, and that was downtown and housing. And it's not to dismiss anything else that's important to be resolved or addressed. I just know that we tend to, we try to be a master of everything, we end up, you know, falling short. It was the old thing, Jacob always trades master of none. So I wanted to start with this corner, and I, a long time, I'll say a long time ago, it feels like years ago, but it was actually last fall. Missy Williams was extremely helpful and very gracious in getting a meeting set up for me with Ball State University and their telecommunication department. I actually got to sit down with the dean of the college and the interim chair of the communications, or telecommunications department. And the dean was very emphatic in saying, one thing that Ball State is working on with their kids is being able to tell their story. It's so important to be able to tell your story. And it really struck me because, you know, it's true in many senses, regardless of what you're doing, even if you're just making widgets, you've got to be able to sit the table across from the guy that might be hiring you and tell him why you're the best widget maker that he can possibly hire today. Or maybe you're proposing to your spouse. You've got to convince them why, of all the people they could choose of in the world, you're the one. We've always got to be able to tell our story. And I know some people in the community might be like, well, you know, my kids aren't going into telecommunications. They don't want to be in front of a TV and stuff. I understand that. That's not what we're saying. What we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is multifaceted. One is where we're trying to do the obvious, we're trying to restore buildings downtown and to bring vibrancy back to our downtown. But number two, we're trying to play on our strengths, and our strengths in this community, one of our strengths is our school. We have a tremendous school. We really do. We're blessed with a great faculty. We aggress, we are blessed with a great program. We're blessed with great kids. Every single one of them. And so when we've got a strength like that, and we've got the KISS program, which is one of just four in the entire state of Indiana, if you've got something unique, if you've got something that's a strength, you play to it. You don't ignore it. And so I deliberated and prayed a lot about this. I was like, how can we tie this all together? So when Missy got the opportunity for me to meet with Ball State, I jumped at it. And we actually, through meetings, we got it set up to where they would send kids over here to work with our kids in the KISS TV program, and then KISS, in turn, we would be sending kids to Ball State to work with their kids. And in fact, I got a message from, actually, that was on my email? No. Yeah, it was on my email. I got a message from Mike Spillman, who is the interim chair, and he wanted to know, he was, he had an invite to tonight's meeting. He said, "It is so exciting to see the project come to fruition," which you're about to see. I will be at the Union City, or he said, wait a second. This is Missy. Sorry, I was reading your message. Sorry. Didn't respond, I was sorry. This is Mike. Says, "Hi, Chad, congratulations. This is great news. I was out last week and going through last week's emails. I regret that I cannot attend tonight's council meeting, but please know that Ball State Telecommunications wants to do in Fall '20 what we weren't able to do in Spring '20 due to the pandemic. Get a group of our students to visit Union City and bring a group of UCEH students to Ball State. If we can make all this work physically, if we can't make it work physically, we will do it virtually, depending on where we're at with the pandemic. We'll keep our fingers crossed that neither school will be sending home students at midsemester." And then it says, "I think JP Hall students," the architectural professor that helped in the program for the project that you're about to see, he goes, "I think his students did a great job with the renderings. As Ben Strack, one of his assistants, noted last fall, they will be glad to help with suggestions for studio design when that time comes." So, but he wished me congrats again, wished all of us congrats. So Ball State's on board with us, and it's a chance for our kids to rub elbows with kids that are already in school and well advanced in their career at Ball State, to get some of that expertise rubbing off on them and give them some insight. It's just a way for our kids to be stronger. And so I want to build a project around that. So that was the genesis of this project. So where we've come to, when I talk about the downtown, if you look, what you're looking at there, when I first saw this picture, I thought it was a library. It's not. It's actually the National Register of our downtown. Those are the buildings. Unfortunately, the, like salmon color or whatever pinkish color that it is up there, those are gone. And if you guys have lived here long enough, you know when a building disappears in Union City, number one, it's gone forever, and number two, basically nothing goes up in its place. We've got to take care of what we have. And we have some very, very beautiful structures downtown that have a significant history to them, that if we don't pay attention to, they will forever be lost. Now, Ball State, as they set this up, the architecture program, the graduate students at Ball State actually took on this Apothecary Building as their spring project, and they presented an hour-long presentation to us a couple months back, and you're, what you're going to see is just a handful of slides from that presentation. Number one, they set up, their project goals was, okay, design a state-of-the-art studio space for KISS TV, for Ball State to come over and for our kids to collaborate. Number two, envision plans for an educational hub and partner programming. Number three, they want to provide a stylish internet cafe space open to all students, being, a lot of our students don't have internet access in the community, but yet they're asked to get their work done. That's a problem. And then number four, create eye-catching retail space for UC, JS, HS gear. That's basically Apache, which is a great program at the school also, but it's a well-kept secret unfortunately for a lot of folks in the community. They don't know about it. So hence, the idea is you have the KISS Studio in the first two sections, à la Times Square, New York. You have Apache in the third section, and you've got an internet cafe in the fourth section of the building. So that's what the building used to look like back in its heyday. And you see all the cars parked out front and a bustling neighborhood, certainly. And you notice the canopy, you notice there's no plywood across the windows, you notice the full-length windows. I will address that in a second.
Was it green?
It was not, it was not green. Great question. You tend to think it's been green all this life. No, it was natural brick, and I'll go ahead and address that now, in fact. The, we had, I saw a couple comments online where people was like, "I hope they can restore the brick." And so does this gentleman here, who's our grant, lead grant administrator on this project, and as did I. The only bad thing was, we don't have a time machine that we could go back to the 80s and tell somebody not to take out the original windows and put in half-size windows, and what they did is they put in different brick underneath them. So the cost to restore the original brick and put in the original-sized windows would be absolutely astronomical and unfortunately not feasible. So we've got to make lemon out of lemonade. And so the rendering that, this is what you obviously see today unfortunately, and you don't need to be looking at that very long. But I do, please do note the architecture pointed out there. That's what Ball State pointed out. The architecture is very unique. If you look at the details of that building, which unfortunately are hidden by the monochrome nature of the building right now, it's got a lot of intricate, intricate, easy for me to say, you know what I'm saying.
Detail.
Detail work, thank you. Detail work that absolutely makes it pop. And if you want to know a whole background on this place, Mr. Kerr that had this building built, actually had a house built on Columbia Street too. Any guesses where it's at?
It's on the corner.
Very good. It's on the corner of the Vision in Columbia. It's where the Downeys live now. And so there's architectural similarities between the two, if you'll notice. But this is a rendering, and these are, this is not, this is not the exact color scheme that we're going to go with, but this is a rendering of what Ball State did, of what the building could look like, as a, once again, bustling site for activity, where you would have the KISS Studio on the right, and then Apache in the middle, and the internet cafe in the far left. The color scheme that we have landed on, and somebody also said online, it's like, "I hope they go to other cities and get ideas and towns." We did that. We went to Troy, Ohio, and there was a beautiful building on the corner, on a circle in Troy, Ohio, that is a, it's a Graysh family, it's got a hint of green in the family, but it's a Graysh color, and it's got maroon highlights, it's trim, and it's got some cream highlights from it. It sounds hard to explain, it may not sound right in your mind right now as I'm explaining it, but when you see the building, it's beautiful. It would absolutely positively complement the building and the way it was created and allow its details to pop.
I like that.
What's that? I'm sorry?
I like that.
You like that?
Especially if it's more of a navy blue than a black.
Yeah, to be honest, that's a great question. I don't know what that color is because my eyes won't afford me the ability to see.
I think it looks very classy.
It's a, but it's, yeah, it's rather eye-popping. So where are we at? Here's where I'm getting ready to turn it over to the gentleman, Mr. Dave Keizer, who's helped significantly with this project, because we've got some great news to share with everyone. Number one was secure all portions of building envelope, and that basically, yeah, well, you want me to turn it over to you now, or you want to share? Okay, okay. Number two, install the proper gutters and downstairs to redirect water away from foundation. Three, paint a historically sympathetic, that's historically sympathetic color scheme, and then perform cleanup and inspections at first floor and basement. The second phase then would be renovate Kerr Block Building to house KISS TV and Apothecary Coffee. That's what Ball State proposed. We wouldn't have Apothecary Coffee because we have a coffee shop going across the street. Restore the storefront configuration to be more sympathetic to historic character, and install historically appropriate awnings and signage, and then also minor cosmetic intervention of the buildings on down the way, those buildings being to the east, going down Pearl Street. And number three would see us perform cleanup of the upstairs, and inspection of upstairs apartments, and then renovate those into executive suites for visiting professionals. So like, I sat down with all the heads of state for the different companies before I took office, and every one of them had the same complaint. I shouldn't say complaint, but they had the same issue in terms of when somebody comes into town for their companies, they have nowhere to stay. There's nowhere to stay in Union City. So we thought executive suites and get their sponsorship on board. You'd have like Cardinal Suites, you could have Eco Suites, you could have Frank Miller Suites, where they would always have folks, or places for folks to stay. We obviously want to retain all the character-defining features within those apartments as much as possible, and then we also would eventually want to remove the slip cover. Now what that is, that's the, that's the, the building that used to be the Miami Theater, anybody who knows the Miami Theater, that had like a steel or whatever it is covering put over it. Unfortunately, it completely heightened the building. It might be soft Indiana brick is why they put that on back in the day. I don't know. But that would be the last, one of the last, very last things we would attempt to do is restore that storefront. But our biggest thing is getting the Apothecary revved and running and operating. So how do we get there though? Because I'm sure the average person would say, okay, yeah, this sounds like a lot of money. Yes, and the way to pursue this aggressively is all hands on deck. And so we've started aggressively pursuing various grants to help make this a reality. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dave Keizer with Keizer Consulting.
We were tasked with the, so my firm is engineers and planners and landscape architects, and one of our specialties is historic preservation. And so when we're talking to the mayor, we were tasked with, are there any grants? And first thing we want to do is purchase the structure, acquire it. And so there's not a lot of grants out there for purchasing historic structures. Well, we found one. It's called the Rural Business Development Grant Program, RBDG of the rural development. And it was kind of an interesting task because we've never used that program before to purchase a historic structure. And there were 18 applications, and we got it. We applied for about $68,820. We got, it's about a 75, 76% grant. And because when the mayor in Monti polling, we're talking about it, you know, they were talking about, well, this is going to be 90-some thousand dollars. It's a big hit to the project fund for the city. You know, and the city's small, we have limited funds. So my job is to make sure that the cost-effectiveness of a project, capital projects, you know, reduce the cost of local impact. So we got a federal grant. And so, and then we were hired also before that to do a study. You have to do a historic structure study. It's a justification study to apply for other grants, to apply for the designing-construction grants. Well, we applied for a $2,500 grant through Indiana Landmarks, and we got it. So we received two grants in the amount of $71,320 so far. Our next task is to end the study, to identify the colors of the building which we have through a visit to Troy, Ohio. We had a very nice mayor over there, and we met with all their department heads who were involved in economic development and community services. So Steve and the mayor and I all went over there, and we were able to meet with them for about a half a day. They rolled out the carpet for us and kind of explained what they're doing. And the two big things that I took away from it was a successful downtown is very unique, very unique. And creative financing. So we already kind of had the creative financing idea intact, but the uniqueness is really what each community's about. And Union City has a uniqueness all to its own, which is, you know, which is embedded very deeply in the rural industry and a successful downtown. I bought all the postcards that you can get from dealers on the internet from 1906 up of this building. I can tell you what this building looked like in every era of every decade. I've got all, I've got the whole plethora of, you talk about cards. And he was texting me every time I played. I collected all the, I collected all the ball cards on this thing. So we even know it's earned run average. No kidding. But, so we know what the building looked like in each of the eras, and that's important in historic preservation research, is to understand what the building. The first thing I said was, "I want to turn the building back to what it looked like in 1906. We want to get all the paint off of it." Well, I came up and went, "Uh-oh, you can't do that." There's a couple things going on with the soft brick and with lead-based paint. So it's kind of hard to do that. The cost-effectiveness just isn't there. So anyway, so we're, so we're, so Ball State came and did a presentation online. I was involved with that, and that's before we knew we had the acquisition grant, and we're currently working through that right now. The mayor is, and he's got the grant agreement in place and so on and so forth. So the next thing is, how are we going to move this thing forward? Well, we're going to develop the study, and then we're going to apply for other grants as indicated in our study about how to implement the design and construction phase. So we have another grant that never fails. So the RBDG grant, we found out about it one week, and it was due the next week. So it's like all hands on deck. The mayor wasn't kidding, because we have to get this stuff done quick. We had a meeting with Indiana Landmarks, and the grant was due that next week. So we've had just literally weeks. You're saying, you're saying to yourself, "Why don't you find out about this stuff quicker?" Well, gee, we didn't know we had this project to move that quick. So we moved it quick, and we've been pretty successful so far. It's really unbelievable. So we have a couple grants that we've identified, and I think the city council has that in their packet, that we've identified. We've, we're going to do a combination of state and federal grant priorities. One is called the Historic Renovation Grant Fund Program. It's a one-to-one match up to 100,000, you can do a $200,000 project, so it's like half off, so you can get up to 100,000 for your project. The Ephrerson Foundation Grant, we were successful again in getting $2,500 towards, off the cost of the study on that. We have, since this project, this building and the district is located in National Registry of Historic Places, we qualify for the Historic Preservation Fund of the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Division Historic Preservation and Archaeology. We can get up to $50,000. Those are chump change compared to this stuff. We have the Public Facilities Grant Program, of which is a 90% federal and 10% local match, up to a half million dollars. That program has kind of been put on hold because of the COVID-19. I call it apocalyptic fairy dust, and when all that's over, it'll come back in the fall. So, so it's a half million dollars. And then that's a federal program also. And then the Community Facilities Program of Rural Development also provides funding up to a half million dollars in grants and low-interest loans. So we're going to target, we're going to target all those that we can to make the radio station happen along with the retail space. It's all about, so this is, this is, so if you think about the mall, well, maybe not a mall anymore. We have, we have anchor, we have anchor stores. This is, this is the anchor store for the downtown area. This is the anchor. So we want to make sure that we're doing it right, cost-effectively, but we want to preserve, we want to preserve the historic structure, and we want to respark the economic development and vitality of the downtown area. That's what we want to do in Union City. That's the vision. We've also received some grants for, also for downtown streets getting improvements, you know, more lighting, you know, trees and stuff like that. So all this, all this is to respark the economic development in the downtown district, okay? To move, to move Union City forward, okay? We have a plan in place, and I think, I think we've got a good plan in place, even though the plan's really not done yet, you know, we're kind of planning ahead because we have to keep applying for grants in order to make these accomplishments and hit our milestones. Any questions?
What's your timeline?
2020 to 2021.
Really?
Yes, yeah. These grants are coming up pretty aggressively, and we want to turn this around pretty quick. We don't want to go five years.
So...
We want to make, we want to make this project happen as quick as we can.
And you're bidding out the jobs?
Everything will be bid out. Public bid.
Is this the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is this the project that you're asking for community help on?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Not sure.
No, no, great clear. We're always going to have community input though, I mean, home projects.
They'll save donations too.
Yeah.
I was thinking of free help.
Yeah, we will, we will be looking at that, and we've done that with Rock, you know, cutting the inside, and we will be looking at that and the inside of the building, the Apothecary, in terms of cleanup. But yeah, all the renovations themselves will be contractor performed. Yeah, and once we pull, so what Ball State has done is preliminary work, and we'll actually lay out the, we'll actually lay out the floor plan and what's to be done with the building from that standpoint. And once we get the plans together, then we'll bid it out, and you know, it'll be a phased process. We'll come and make presentations to the council and the public, kind of show you what's going on with the, kind of an update, if you will, perhaps monthly, to kind of keep you going, keep you updated on what's going on with the, I call it rediscovery of downtown. So anyway.
Dave, were you including the suites in the 21, 21, 21 action, or is that, or is that another step?
You know, we've got two, we've got two, we need to talk about that a little bit. Is it okay? We've got two level of thoughts on this, okay? Rural development really doesn't like temporary housing. The suites are temporary housing. It's counterproductive to what they see as far as job creation, job retention. We did consider that. I like the idea. Matter of fact, I went and met with Home with Sweets.
So you're, so you're looking more...
We're looking at it, but we're, but we're looking more towards office suites.
Right, yeah, okay.
So instead of overnight suites, because there may be some stipulations with some of the federal grants that we're pursuing that may limit us in not having temporary housing. Temporary housing's kind of a whole different dynamic than renovating commercial structures with regard to job retention and job creation. There's two separate goals on that, and so we have to be very careful as we move forward. It's going to be a pretty fluid situation upstairs.
Yeah.
So downstairs is going to be our initial focus. We're going to show both.
Focus on the downstairs.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I wondered whether you can, we could focus on the downstairs.
Yes.
Get that project through, get the grants finished.
That's exactly what we're going to do. Yep, great question. In fact, that's the way Ball State lined it up for us too. So that was, yeah, that was what they were moving. Yeah, the priorities downstairs.
Right.
And then the end floor of the building.
But through the design process, you're looking at the upstairs structure situation, make sure you're not doing something twice.
Oh, absolutely correct, yeah, yeah. We'll have a couple different options for upstairs as well. Yeah. We'll, we'll look at the, we'll look at the overnight suites in the study, and then we'll look at office suites. So those, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out, but those will be the two options that we take a look at. Okay. So, very exciting times. So congratulations to all of you. It's a big day for Union City.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you, Dave. So with that being said, the, what I would entertain, or what I do need from council then, is a commitment for the match that we do have in project funds, that we do have budgeted for. It would be a match in the amount of 24, 480, 24, 880, sorry, 24, 880 would be the match basically to, for us to be able to acquire the other 68,120.
Jan? This is, go ahead, Jan. This is for which, which grant? I mean, because I see 100,000 in there.
This, well, the one we've received is not on there. That would be if you have the, there you go. You can pass it down if you'd like.
Pass it down if you'd like. There's our, I figured somebody might have that question.
This is the acquisition?
Yes. This is the acquisition grant, the amount of $68,120. And then the local match, Tito, is on the second page. Okay. Which we can't do anything until we have, submit this report.
Right.
Does the city already own the building?
No, no.
Who was that question?
Does the city own the building? We do not.
Is there a negotiation price on the building?
That was a negotiation price. It was, it was higher than that initially. It's actually three buildings that we're purchasing.
What's the total dollar amount?
Ninety-three.
Okay.
So the average is up to 30, roughly 30 and one a building. Which the asking price of the building across the street is 35. So it's at least in the ballpark. It's actually less than the assessed value according to the tax assessor for Randolph County.
Jan, can you tell us how much are in project funds offhand?
No, I'd have to go get through and see what's in the city projects.
I tried to flip through it, but I figured you'd know it better than I did. Sorry. Question, would the, would the building remain under the ownership of the city?
Not long term, no.
So what's the vision?
The idea is eventually be a conglomerate of the school and because Aaron Black and I've had this discussion already and/or the entities owning the suites upstairs, so, or running the suites. So yeah, this is not designed to be a city project. It's only for the facilitier to get it to its endpoint.
Is there any way to get some of these city matched funds back in the long run?
Uh, yeah, through assessed value that completely blows away where we're at now.
I mean...
Because if you dump a million dollars into the property, it's going to be...
Now, to put it black and white, we're taking $24,180 of city project funds that could go towards something else on, you're going to hate me for saying this, a gamble that we're going to get the rest of these funds to complete the building.
Right. That's what your dad used to do with the project.
I am not my father.
I know, I know. But Nate, the point is, this building, how long has this building been empty? Anybody care to guess?
I'm just trying to make sure we're making a wise decision. Did you have that figure?
There's 179,000 of unappropriate, or appropriate funds to win that project.
It's a poor business decision, Mr. Nathan, if you turn down $71,000 because you don't want to spend 24. That's a poor business decision.
Well, you're looking at it incorrectly.
No, I'm not.
We're buying it for 24, but it's still going to take a boatload more money to finish.
Correct, correct. To make it what it can be and what it should be and to help serve the school and the community and to be a thriving entity downtown once again.
Okay, how much is it going to cost for all that?
Bucket-wise or ballpark-wise, it's probably 500 to 650,000 to get the project looking like immaculate and like the way Ball State set it up.
Exterior and the whole downstairs.
Exterior and interior.
Okay.
Yes.
A good example, if you have chances, go to Sullivan, Indiana. They've done the identical thing. They've now got seafood and a steak restaurant at the bottom of the building they bought and their TV video production studio for the students is upstairs overlooks, they replaced, they did some replacement windows. I'm not, don't know enough about windows, Chad, so help me with that. I've shown you all that. And another one's Rushville. They've invested.
I've been to Rushville.
Yeah, same thing. You're seeing a very similar project and that's why kind of when Chad started talking about this, I said, go Sullivan, go to Rushville. And they've made a dynamic difference in their community by making a cornerstone that gives everybody else something to build on. I'm not trying to talk you into it, I'm just saying.
Don't get me wrong, I love this idea.
There are success stories out there. Do it.
I love the idea. I just want to make sure we've checked all the boxes to make sure we're not like, well, we need another $500,000 to finish this project. We have no means of getting it. No, I love all the research to put it together and with everything, it looks like we're going to get a majority of the money for it. I just wanted to know.
That's what the study does too, Nathan. We'll identify not only what the costs are, the preliminary costs to renovate the structure, but also is it, you know, what would be a good methodology for further implementation? At least buyback, you know, rental payments, you know, whatever.
Okay.
So we'll evaluate that as well.
Have we had an inspector go through it to make sure we're buying something that's going to stand?
Yes, we have. We have inspectors.
Okay. Well, no, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to somebody that is, this is what they do every day.
I only have one question on that, Nathan. What's next year going to bring?
We don't know.
Exactly. So what do you do? Sit here and wait till next spring before you figure out this is what we want to do? Sometimes you just got to dive in and take the chance. It's for the community and it's going to help everything. You dive in and take care of it.
I don't want people to come back and say, you wasted our tax dollars on the building.
Because in fact, occasion time, what did they do to help the community? I'm first, I am the population of your community.
Just have...
I mean, that's the people. We are the community. We pay the community.
The total people that are here.
I'm willing to take the chance. This guy does stuff for the community because I live here.
Some of us are already taking that chance and put our money where our mouth is.
I'm just saying, this is what you do. You hop in and you go for it. If you're going to make it successful, you're going to make mistakes. If you don't make mistakes, you ain't doing shit. You're just sitting on your ass. You need to move forward. This town has stopped ever since the industry left in the 70s, 80s. Stop, quit. We got to do something, people. We can't sit here and just bet, well, who's going to come over the money? Well, it's going to be us. Roll up your sleeves.
That was not complaining, it's making sure we're not going to get in over our heads.
Well, what's over your head? That's what I'm trying to say, what's...
A million dollars that the city doesn't have on a budget is, will be over our heads.
But the city is, this is, this is not actually city stuff. This is a provision in a historic building.
$24,180 is city stuff.
And you don't think this city hasn't pissed that away before?
And if we don't get any other grants, then the other 500,000 could potentially come out of city pocket.
Okay. I'm okay with that because we're going to do something.
I agree.
If we don't sit here, like I say, if we don't do something, the whole town is just going to fall around you. It's going to go away.
I mean, you know you're preaching to the choir, like we are up here.
No, no, no.
We're up here because we care.
I would like, I understand your concerns about what if, what if nothing happens? That's where you're at.
Nothing. So did you have a question?
I have two, actually. How many suites are you talking about?
Well, originally, there's eight apartments up there now, but I thought we would have to go down to seven because we were going to restore the original stairway.
Right.
Off the Columbia Street entrance. But in scoping out the upstairs, there's actually room enough to still have eight suites. It just would have one that would be smaller than the others and still have the stairway. So it'd be at least seven, no more than eight is what we'd be looking at.
Do you think at this time you would have those rented out?
Three to four of them, yeah. They, the people I spoke to, they always have, in fact, when I was speaking to, the last one I spoke to was Rob Liggins, he had two people in, one was staying in Greenville and one was staying in Richmond.
Would it be responsible to do that before the bottom or is that going to create a mess for the people upstairs by doing the upstairs first?
It's a great question. I don't know what the feasibility would be.
Well, right now, we need to get the downtown, or excuse me, the downstairs done first for the retail space and the Kiss TV.
I like that, that's back to where we were on the other...
I was just thinking of money coming in.
No, no, I got it, I got it. But you know, we've got to see what we can do within the parameters of our federal grants.
I understand that.
Because it's, if it's temporary housing, it's a no-go. I just want to be upfront about that. Or it's office space. So it's going to be a rental payment no matter what. So we've got some options, you know, either way.
Okay, so my other question was, I heard you say that you don't intend for it to be a city property.
Correct.
What, are you going to sell it to the school?
Well, if we sold it to the school, it'd be for...
Who are you going to sell it to? I mean, what do you, if it's not going to be a community property after this is all over with, then whose property is it going to be?
Well, again, we've had a conversation with Aaron Black, it'd be a community, Randolph Eastern Community School project or Community School Facility because they would have actually three entities in the first floor.
So my question is, is that, they're going to own the property? They're going to, is that going to be something that our school taxes are going to pay for and, or how's it going to work when you're done?
Conceivably, it would be, if it would be a school property, conceivably, the first floor would be self-sustaining because Kiss, the idea behind Kiss and having that in there is we would be making promotional projects for other, and Brian Camaro can speak for this, be making like advertising videos, promotional videos, selling advertising space. So you'd have that spot that would be seek to be self-sustaining. You'd have Apache, which would also seek to be self-sustaining in terms of producing revenue for doing print projects for local schools, county schools, other entities, other businesses. And so the idea is to have actual viable businesses in those two entities.
But who'll be paying the taxes on that building?
Well, if it'd be a school-owned property, it would be the...
So you're talking about it being school-owned property?
Potentially, not guaranteed. I don't want to guarantee anything, but I mean that's...
All right, but you just said at the beginning of this that you, in the long term, you don't intend for it to be a city-owned property.
And that's 100% true.
Okay.
Correct.
I just wondered, because I know we've got an issue with, with a couple of businesses downtown having, having a problem with how high their taxes are. And one of them is somebody that's doing something phenomenal for downtown. I'm just curious as to who's going to pay the taxes on that building because the taxes are going to go sky high on that building. And I love the project. Don't get me wrong, don't think I'm trying to stab anybody in the back.
No, no.
I'm all for it, I'm all for doing anything I can do for it. I'm just curious because I know that we do have some issues with downtown taxes. So that's what my question was based on. Or if it's owned by a non-for-profit, they don't pay taxes on that one.
That's true. Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about that. That's true.
He said, long run, he does, they don't intend for it to own that.
There are other 501(c)(3)'s that could potentially own it, that are in, within the city.
Well, and my, my thought, I'm sorry, what's that? To be determined. Yeah, the idea is to be determined.
We're looking at all options.
Okay, just curious.
We'll have a better idea for you in about a month and a half on that.
I will bet every ounce of blood I have flowing through my body right now that it's going to be far easier to sell a property that's had $750,000 in renovation done to it than what we've got sitting there.
And you do have three properties?
Yes, correct, correct. But I mean, seriously, if we've got $750,000 that's dumped into a facility that is not city, I mean, we're talking grant, this is what, I can't stress enough, we're talking grant money. We're not, when somebody hears half a million, please, anybody watching Kiss right now, all the cities who have spent a half a million dollars on this, no, no. The city is not spending a half a million dollars on this project. If anybody walks out of this meeting remembering one thing, the city is not spending a half a million dollars on this project. Okay?
Just so we're clear, that's...
Just so we're clear, that's the one thing, that's all I remember Spence saying is we're not spending a half a million. Yes, but that's so important because again, good business, you're utilizing other people's monies. That's what good business does every day. They utilize, they leverage other people's money. That's what we're trying to do because we want our dollars to stretch further. And so that's, that's the goal. Is this an absolute lit pipe, everything is perfect, 100% project? No, no. It's, it's, it's hard to have that in today's society, but it is our absolute best effort to make a significant change downtown and to join hands with two entities that have already pledged their support in making this work, being Ball State University and our school. And so again, it's, it's my college try to make a positive impact for the downtown. And so when people come to Union City, like, wow, that's a really nice looking court. Man, that looks a lot better. Because you know what I hear now?
They're going to pay the green again?
No. I can't even share some of the words I've heard described.
You've heard of the Green Monster in Fenway Park? That's our Green Monster.
Yeah.
You know, we can't guarantee the results on this by any means, you're right, but I think there is one thing we can guarantee. If we do nothing, we're still going to be looking at an old green dilapidated empty building. Four years from now, six years from now.
Doing nothing is not really an option.
And my, I'm, I know, listening to Nathan and Nathan and I haven't had a discussion about this previous to this at all, but I know exactly where he's coming from on this. And I've got the same type of reservations, but the one thing that I have a lot of confidence in is our, our history over the past 12 years, 14 years of grant applications, we've been extremely successful. We've been freakishly successful in our ability to, to secure grants. And so I'm very confident that that can be, that we can continue to do that and that we'll be able to perform on these grants. And so the cash outlay is pretty minimal and whichever way, direction it goes, I think it's going to be, it can be very productive. And even if the building just is in use, in place, isn't a, you know, and is cash neutral, it is so much of an enhancement to, to our downtown and to the, to the community as a whole, it'd be worth every penny.
Right.
And I think it'll pay off, I think it'll pay off in dividends a long way. But like I say, the one thing we can guarantee, we don't do anything, we're going to have exactly what we have now, only it's going to just get worse.
Exactly.
So what are we looking at in terms of the outlay, right? What is the matching funds for the grants that we're hoping to get? What are we looking at now as a, an outlay within a year or...
Total, well...
We're still working on that. We'll have the study done within a month and a half and we'll be coming back for council and we'll, and we'll have different scenarios on the phasing of the project.
Like USDA though, for example, or like their Public Facilities, it's sort of preservation. That's a 90% granted, so that means we would be responsible for 10% to get a half a million dollars. So granted, that's still what, 50,000?
And we might not be asking for half a million dollars or anything.
Right, right.
We might be, I mean, it might, so it'd be a maximum of 50,000.
Right.
One of the things that, you know, regarding council's questions is the fact that this project, and the mayor and I talked about this, I'm going, you know, to cost-effectively implement the project. And that's what the grants will do and you'll afford to do as much as you can, when you can, with what you've got. Okay? The idea is not to rig the city on this one project because, you know, there's money pits out there and you've got to watch all those. There's a movie on that, check it out, it's pretty good. But anyway, is to make sure that the money that we get is directed at the phase to accomplish a certain goal. That's where we're at. Okay?
And also the, the matches might not necessarily be city funds.
Right, yeah, matches come in different forms. Because one thing I'm not even divulge, there's somebody in the community that's paying for the painting of the building.
It could be in-kind match.
There's in-kind matches, there's, and there's, there's lots of ways, you know, not to get too, not to elaborate too much, but it's not necessarily the city writing a check out too, not to elaborate too much, but it's not necessarily the city writing a check out of tax receipts for, for these matches. And, you know, we're looking at probably, let's say, safe to say, $100,000 to $150,000 total in matches in this.
Perhaps.
Perhaps.
Well, and there's also...
Plus, then, I mean, that's the top end.
Yeah. And there's also low-interest loans available to the city at 2%.
Yeah.
You know, right now, they're 1.83% to 2%. So it might be that we don't have to pull anything out of city coffers, and we go a low-interest loan for financing for 30 years. Just an option. So we have to look at all those things. You know, so, anyway. Don't spend it too hard, but, you know, that's an option.
For the match.
For the match, for the match. That's the only time you can match a, you can match a federal loan with a federal grant. So we got options. That's, that's my commonality, is we got options, so.
So right now, you're looking for a motion for $24,880 for the, for the match, for the purchaser. I'll make that motion.
Do we have a first, and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Jan, would you take, we'll call vote?
Brandon Elmore.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tia Freus.
Yes.
Dave, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Oh, Monty just said, "I don't have any audio, and I have no sound." Again, Monty missed that entire conversation. Okay. All right, moving along. Department reports. Let me gather my information here. We do have some updates. The water, it's been brought, the water pH level has been questioned. I had a text from our county health director, who, not questioning himself, he had a comment from somebody else in the community wondering about the pH level. And so we have an outstanding water department. I got with, actually, I wasn't thinking, I got with Rob first, but then got directed to Brad, of course, who oversees the drinking water. And Brad had John Feggo out and test in three different spots, including the person's home, and it was a 7.4, which is almost perfect, you know, for a pH level in the water. So the one thing I will caution anybody who questions their pH level on their water is that if they're using like a homemade, or not homemade, a home test strip, like say, for example, using a pool, those can be highly suspect in accuracy, and that might be the issue. But certainly, even if you think there is an issue, don't hesitate to reach out to the water department, and we'll get someone out there to check for you. But I am happy to report that the levels are perfectly fine. The library sidewalk that we proposed last time, I had, I got with Monty, and I had asked him if he'd reach out to NDOT, because I also reached out to Lawrence Sexton to see if the library's willing to match. And he is checking with his, I can't remember his board, but I can't remember if it was accountant for the library, or what gentleman he said, but he was going to check. And then Monty's checking with the NDOT, because it is in, in, NDOT's right-of-way. So I would love for them to be able to put the bill for the library sidewalk, and that gets that replaced while everything else is being done. The cemetery gates, I know that's come up.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. Good news. We've not hawked them, we've not put them on Craigslist, we've not mowed them down, we've not, they've been, what's, the issue is, is the way they're set up, and, and I had to think, I got to think about this, and I don't have this proven yet, but I think that, that arch, those gates was put up when they were still carrying caskets through there with a horse.
1906.
Okay. So it wasn't cars pulling, you know, the caskets through. So the, because of the equipment they have nowadays, when they go into the park, they, well, to someone's point, I can't remember who it was, it was told me, when they drive a hearse, they hold their breath that they get, that they're not going to scrape the car and go through and hit the gates, and A, damage in the vehicle, and B, damage in the gates. So I asked for Board of Works to discuss it this afternoon in their meeting, and what they, our head, or our head of our street department, Brad Mink, had a great idea of attaching to the back of the, the arch, so they'll still be there, but they will be out of the way of equipment going through. So I hope that, yes, and, and yeah, he also...
That's okay. Yeah, that's what, what Brad's proposing, what he wants to do is, and he's, this is a little fluid, because he's going to make sure that it'll actually work, but probably set a, rather than attach them directly to the, the stone...
I spoke to him after the meeting.
Yeah. And we're going to put poles, put a, probably a steel pole behind, attach it to that, and secure them.
And they won't be flexible.
And they, and they won't be functional. And one of the, two things, one of the biggest, one of the problems that they had is they were continually going out and finding this, a gate flapping where they'd come loose. And so we had a couple of problems. One, they can get hit, you couldn't make a, a left turn or a right turn, you couldn't really turn, you had to go straight in, and without being in danger of hitting the gates. And, and we have equipment that has to go through there, that can't go over the bridge safely, so that has to go in and out of that gate. And so the, I was more concerned about the gates being damaged than the, than the vehicles, quite frankly. And so this way, and then the other thing is, when I saw how easily the guys took the gates down, that's, you know, the, one of the things that came up was where they stole them. And that's the, could be a real possibility, they were easy enough to remove, that somebody could come up and steal them, and you never know they were gone until it was, until it was too late. So the way that Brad proposes to secure them, they will be there, they will be mounted permanently, where they won't be, they'll be secure enough that nobody can come up and lift them off and throw them in a, you know, you guys take them and throw them in a truck. They're heavy, but, but it could be done. So they'll be, they'll be back in position. I, I think it'll be acceptable as far as the, the aesthetics, that, that it'd be a good solution all the way around.
Okay, well, when I was talking to Brad today, Monty came out, said that it was also tossed around at the meeting, that there was a possibility that they would put them behind this stage up here.
We talked, that was, that's discussed.
That, I can't let that happen. They have to go back. And Monty promised me, promised me they would be put back on the cemetery. And I kind of like a timeline, and because I'm, I'm going to stay on this, because that's my cemetery, that's part of our history, my family's there, and they're going to be there forever. And I think it's pretty awesome. We've got, we've got a governor just a few hundred feet beyond those gates.
Yeah.
And, and I love those gates.
I've got a lot of family in there, too.
And I'm somebody that, I'm like a dog with a bone, I won't let this go. Those gates are not gone on the back of this building.
No, well, we don't have a timeline exactly, because he's just starting, he's just working on the details.
But he promised me today.
I think, I think that later on this summer, sometime here, they'll be back in place. I don't think it'll take terribly long.
But it is a good, it is a go. They will be back on the cemetery.
That's, that's the intention.
Okay. I hate for you to see my ugly side.
If you got, if you got a side that's tenacious, maybe we can use you in some things.
Yeah, really, because I'll just, I'll be here every meeting from now on. And I'm retired, and I'm, I'm ready to be of community service.
Awesome.
What I would like to have, I'd like to have all the wrought iron fence that was taken down.
Absolutely.
I don't even know how long ago. Free dates.
I remember it.
Being moved from here, and I don't recall how long it's been since then. Now, it was in pretty dilapidated condition.
Being at least to the river, I remember it. I don't think we had it beyond the river.
No, no.
But yeah, I remember that. And I know that there's been a lot of complaints about the shrubbery being taken down, with the shovel cap. I think it looks great. I'm not going to complain about that.
Well, thank you. Well, that's, that's one of those things where that kind of stuff has a lifespan, and once it exceeds its lifespan, it needs to be removed and replaced, or, or something different done. And that's, that's the, just the kind of day-to-day stuff that, that's operation stuff that we have to do, that doesn't, it doesn't come necessarily before this body. As a matter of fact, some stuff doesn't immediately come to the Board of Works, you know, because they don't come, they don't come see the Board of Works about every little thing, what they're going to do on Monday morning, but...
Well, I do have one more issue about cemetery. I know that's, the mowing is...
I'm calling, Dave, we don't have your name in...
I'm Candace Kendall.
Okay.
I've been, I've lived here since I was 10 years old. I'm 68 years old. My, my family is buried out there, and, and we have very nice graves. Beside our graves are, I've got the name on my phone, and then their children, two young girls. Whoever's mowing our cemetery tore that stone completely off, the foundation that was cemented on, and the, and I've got pictures of it. Not only that, but they hit it so hard that the base foundation that's down in the ground has a gap that big, and failed, what they did is they caught it with their back tire, and failed to report it or, or move it. It's easily done by a grown man. Somebody just didn't want to get off that, off that mower. And I know we, we, we've been that out. If you want to see it, I'm happy to show it to you. I've got three pictures of it. And Brad told me, he reassured me today that it would be taken care of. But I've had more than one person, since I brought this up in the community, tell me that this is an ongoing thing with this mowing company, that they've had their, that they've had their stones knocked completely off the foundation.
We had that problem before that, too. We had that problem, and we had crews otherwise. It's been a continual problem to have that. And it's, it's kind of the nature of it, but it's, doesn't, doesn't minimize it, it just...
The people that own this only come once a year. They come at Memorial Day, and this has been done since Memorial Day. I'm taking it upon myself as a, as a owner of graves, which are, this is right beside my four graves. And not only that, but it's disrespectful. It's disrespectful not to report it and have it taken care of. And it's been that way since at least the last time that they mowed out there.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, because I'll get with Brad, and Brad's...
Brad told me he would take care of it.
I'll follow up with him.
And I have full confidence in Brad.
Oh, he will, yeah, he's outstanding. He will. But I just want to make sure this conversation happened with one crew, too.
Yes, yes, I ask him to do that as well.
Awesome.
Because he told me today, when I talked to him about both issues, that this is not the first issue that he's had with this mowing company. And if they're going to be an ongoing problem, then it needs to be rebid.
Agreed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for everything.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Last one is, and this is, this is something I think is really cool. The Legion out here has done what, in my opinion, is a phenomenal job in painting the side of their building, dark blue, the gold strip. And there's a mural that's going to go up on the left-hand side of the building as you're looking at it, and it's going to be soldiers from each war, each American war, and they're going to be saluting this statue that's going up. And I'll pass this around, you can share this with everybody in the audience. That statue right now is being created in South Dakota, and will be shipped down here. And this is an absolute joint project between like Preservation and the Community Foundation, and, and the city's got a small hand as well, and, and I, my apologies if I'm, for whoever I'm leaving out, but it's, it's just a really cool project. And I just think it's going to be chilling. We get, we wrap flags over there, it'd be landscape, it'd be pretty, or it'd be functional, increase parking spaces.
They're putting a deck out there, too.
Yes, yeah, the Legion's doing that, yeah. And they're just, they've been awesome, and they've been a blessing. And it's going to be a great memorial to people who, and it just, I got to give hats off to Vic, both of us, because we, I saw him over the weekend, my son and I were cleaning up a property, not, well, not being, just trying to help. And he come out, and we talked a little bit, and, and he said, you know, we acquired some, or actually got some funds through something they're doing, and if we want to put it to good use. And so I said, and it's like, here, this comes from a guy who's already served the country. You know, he'd already put his life on the line for the country, and here they're continuing to want to serve, which I just think is awesome. So that's going to be a really neat corner when it's done, and of course, overlooking others and crossing.
I have a few people ask, is the rest of the building getting painted, too?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I wasn't sure how to answer it.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Not, not, it's not been made, I've not been made aware of that. Good question, though. So department heads, we don't... Jan?
No.
Okay. Council members. Brandon?
The only thing I would like to say is congratulations to the class of 2020, their graduation. And Brian, you for, Mr. Merrill, for putting together the commencement video, that was really good. You shared with me before the meeting today that you'd spent almost three weeks editing that video. And it's, it's really good, and if you haven't seen it, I would, I would suggest checking it out on KISS TV.
It's on Facebook?
It's on Facebook and YouTube. They get on KISS's page, scroll down, it'll take you to the YouTube link, or then go to the KISS TV link as well. And again, if the folks who was indulged, I do have part of that ceremony for about five, four minutes sometime tonight, if we can squeeze in, let the folks see it.
Yeah, and I, I think you said there were 56 graduates in this...
There were, if there was something to do next to ceremony, Mr. Elmore, I think it was total, might have been 59, 60.
And, and listening to the video, it sounded like we had three graduates who are potentially entering or have entered the armed forces. Nick Wells, I think he had just recently shifted out to the Marines, yeah. Gabe Hughes has future plans to enlist in the Army, and then Jacob Connor, who has some military aspirations in his future as well, he said, in listening to the video. So congratulations to those three.
Awesome.
Along with all of the graduates, so that's all I have, though.
Well, that's great. Dave?
Just a couple things. The, and actually, it's about 4th of July. July 3rd, Hummel's Drive-In in Winchester is going to be showing a movie, and also doing fireworks. July 4th, Winchester has fireworks at dusk, is what I was told. And then Union City fireworks are July 5th. So if you're looking for things to do over the next few weeks, those are definitely options. Another thing is, there is funds that will be available for any business that did not get PPP, EIDL, or any loans due to the pandemic. If you are still seeking funds or had an issue, you can reach out to Randolph County Economic Development and essentially get some money one way or another. Whether it's a grant or a loan, there's some funds available. So if you're interested, reach out to Randolph County Economic Development. Missy Williams would be a good person to contact, or see him.
I have two young grants, we do not use, we do not do loans, but we can get you two loans. There are PPP loan, the EDL loan. We don't do loans, we're just doing the, we have money left in the Oprah, COVID Rapid Response Grant, is awarded $217,000. So the balance of $250,000, we have that balance available, will be a second round.
To be loaned, correct?
Yes. Not loaned, that's a grant. You don't pay that back, there's no taxes on it. Oprah Grant is not loaned, it's a grant.
Okay.
You're awarded the money, and you're not even, it's a grant, when you get a grant, you don't pay tax on that either. But there are the PPP loans, they, there is money still on those, EDIL loan, there is some of those. We can get you two of them, but we don't facilitate those.
Yeah. It's a good place to start, if you're having business issues. I just know that, that there was a lot of people that benefited from that, and wanted to make sure that if you weren't aware, you are now. Other than that, everything's good?
Tim?
I don't have any.
Tito?
Well, two more points have already been covered. So I don't have much, but I did have a question. I noticed when reviewing the, the finances, the accounts payable register lists a cost of $3,000 with the description, "Donation authorized by Resolution 218R05." The payment of $3,000 was made to an entity named Union City Redefined, from the, from the City Projects Appropriation. And when I Googled Union City Redefined, I clicked on the White Pages and got an address of 1274 South State Road 32. This is the address of Eco Vehicle Systems. So that's my friend Rob Lycan's company. I looked at the, at the resolution, and it's for affordable housing and quality of life projects that every year the city gives a donation of up to $5,000 for. And so I, my question is, what are some of the, you know, the affordable housing and quality of life projects that we've been able to...
It's HUD. It's HUD. Jan, did you want to elaborate? No? Okay.
$3,000 is used for housing and urban development. I don't know how you got on ECO. Union City Redefined is a separate 501(c)(3), correct?
Correct. I can probably explain that. Rob Lycan's was the original chairman of Union City Redefined. He was the original person at the head of the table. So my guess is the Yellow Pages has just not updated any of the address information.
That goes back to the Union City Economic Development Committee.
And now the head of that is Ted?
Correct.
Ted.
So if you have questions and want to look at the books. Ted, I'm sorry, Tito will be calling you.
All dead. All right. New bit, or actually no presenters, no old business. We do have one ordinance 2020-10, which is the ordinance to amend the county zoning. And that is on the second reading. So any questions that have arisen since the first reading? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move, we accept ordinance 2020-10, ordinance to amend county zoning. On the second reading, by title only.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and second. Jan, if you would, we'll call them.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Nathan Conklin?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Peter Freus?
Yes.
All right. New business ordinance 2020-11, which is the alley vacation.
Chad, Chad, we skipped city manager and attorney.
Nike's, we sure did. Sorry.
I'm good.
Thank you, man. Let me see if, do we still have Monty on, on board? Steve is meeting as assistant city manager.
Anything you wanna chime in or anything you need to cover? Okay. Yeah, cause I don't think we have.
Yeah, I'm here, Chad.
Okay, now, moving forward. 2020-11, which is the alley vacation, and that's the east of 425.
25 South Street Alley. And this is on the first reading, this is what we had the public hearing on the last meeting. Has there been any questions or comments that have stemmed from the public hearing?
Is that the alley behind us?
No. I don't, I'm sorry, that's where you live.
Marguerite, outer street.
No, it's, it's the...
It's South Street. It's down.
So it's the alley behind where Marguerite Conklin used to, between the, between the city garages and the...
Another block over, you know where Counting Thomas lived?
No.
You know where Diana Evans lives?
No.
Okay, she doesn't actually live there.
Where's Luke?
He's got the house.
I know where he's living.
That's passed away.
What, what?
It's an alley to nowhere.
What two, what two streets is it between?
Well, it's...
South Palm?
In the cornfield.
And South Street, in the cornfield. So it is the alley that goes in behind?
It is, it's a unimproved alley that's right next to that stone-faced house on South Street. It's actually south, it's on the south side of South Street, this little strip.
Well, my concern is because there is a vacated alley beside our apartment.
Yeah.
And then there's an alley behind it, my place.
Right, but it's not, it's, it's on down South Street, farther down past.
And why are they vacating it?
Because there's a lot of stuff going on in it that doesn't need to be happening.
Amen.
It's a nuisance to me.
Maybe it's my neighborhood. I just wondered if that...
It's a nuisance.
It's an opportunity to eliminate nuisance.
Good deal.
So any questions or?
Was anything resolved with how ownership would be divided?
That's out of our bowl of, our span of control.
I wouldn't dare mean to answer, I know it was like a...
Yeah, I know, it's a great question, but I mean, it's, yeah, it's for them to think up with.
They're good, yeah, Brian?
So basically, all the city can do is just vacate it.
Okay.
Someone comes with a, the way the process works is that someone comes with a request to vacate an unimproved alley. It comes before, there has to be notification sent to adjoining landowners. And then it comes before the council. And then the question for the council is, do you vacate it, do you not vacate it? The council vacates it, then that's all the council, that's all the council, that's all the council can do.
The rest of it goes to the county?
Well, either the county or the people and the neighbors. I mean, I can tell you that when I've dealt with it before, not in my position as, as a city attorney, but just as someone, an attorney representing a landowner, specifically like with the railroad, this vacated, or the Vanen Railroad, that you, each, each side, you own to the middle. So if you have land adjoining to one side, land adjoining to the other side of it, you own to the middle. But that's, that's really between the neighbors and the county.
Okay.
So, yep.
Did you, pardon, move them?
No, I haven't made a motion yet.
I moved the ordinance 2020-11, alley vacation, east of 425 South Street, on the first reading, title only.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
Brandon?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here trying to have a conversation with Monty. Go ahead, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Peter Freus?
Yes.
Monty, can you hear me now?
Good lord. So, love technology. How about now? No, it's not happening.
Okay, I can see his face and his, it shows he's not muted, but...
Hold a flag? Well, he's got his still picture up. It's a good, good idea though. Stipulation list for property renovation.
And this all of a sudden is becoming, is becoming an increasingly bigger issue for us to resolve. For everybody to fill you in, again, beginning me, I talked about downtown housing. Well, and with housing, we formed what's called ROCK. And so we don't have our official 501(c)(3) designation yet, we've applied for it, we're expecting it soon. It is, stands for renovating our community. And it's where we get a home that's either been gifted to us or that's on the condemnation list. When I used to hear the word condemnation, I thought, okay, it's leaning to the side, it's about ready to fall over. Condemnation list could be something that, property that popped up on there because it was consistent nuisance because of drug activity or whatever the case may be. And they were not able to address those nuisance, nuisance issues. So henceforth, the, the, the property gets turned over to the city. And property gets vacated and then gets turned over to the city. So I wanna renovate these homes because actually to tear down a home, the ones that are feasible anyway, to tear down a home, it can cost anywhere from $10,000 to $30,000. And to renovate a home and get a family that lives in there, it means you've, you've saved a property on the tax roll. And, and you've got a, a nice property again. And case in point, we have a property down here by the library. 502 North Columbia Street. And it's gonna be having windows and a new roof put on it here real soon. And then we've got a contract for the indoor work to be done, the plumbing, the heating and everything. And when that's done, our goal was to keep it at $75,000. And right now our budget, we're $61,000 is what we spent. And that would be basically everything but the drywall in three rooms and the floors. So we're looking pretty good right now and we already have a buyer on the line for it. And so our job is to sell it at cost. We're not interested in profit or 501(c)(3). We just wanna improve the homes in the community. And we have a potential buyer who has a young daughter who's, has accessible issues, accessibility issues, she's in a compliant wheelchair. And this would be a way for her to get downtown without crossing the river tracks. The design, the program is designed to serve teachers, military and first responders. That was what the program is designed for. But we're not gonna turn anybody away, hence our first buyer. But the, we've got a couple of homes down on Plum Street now that are not too far from your neck of the woods, that are, they're corner properties on the east side of the street, heading toward the school, right by the corner of Division and, yeah, you know. And the grandson unfortunately has let them go, let the properties go, literally, figuratively, most. And, and so there's a lien on them. And once that, if we can get that resolved with the bank, we're trying to get the properties turned over to redevelopment. Cause we have a potential, we have a person who wants to flip them. And, but we need to have the stipulations intact. So Nate brought up a few minutes ago that, you know, instead of turning all these down, why don't we see if some can be saved? And, but we've gotta have, you know, some procedures in place to make sure we don't get stuck with something, to make sure that the property does get rehab and does get owner occupied and so it serves everybody well. So that's where we're at. So I ask you, anything you come up with?
My questions come down to legality, if I don't even know what we, what some of our thoughts and my thoughts with other people are. Can we require somebody to inhabit it as a primary or sell it within a certain timeframe? Say for example, Chad has the house, goes up for auction, I buy it for $50. I'd then have, for example, 18 months to make it my primary residence, inhabitable, or sell it on the open market as a primary residence, not a rental. Is that possible?
Well, I know that if, if push comes to shove and you end up in court, courts in Indiana tend to look unfavorably on restrictive covenants and deeds, which is what this is. But I know that when we did, years ago, when we did the, all the houses here in town that were re...
Oh, yeah, the, oh gosh, it was a federal program.
Yeah, the federal program, those did come with restrictive covenants.
Yeah.
Ones without?
Yes.
Yes, those, those did come. So I'm not gonna say, without doing some research, I'm not gonna rule it out. I think we probably could do something like that. I just need to look into it.
And then the question with that is gonna be the time period, how long a time can you restrict that in terms of? Because, I mean, obviously you're gonna have a hard time putting an expectation that you can put that restriction on for the next 100 years. It's probably gonna be a, a certain time limit that's, that's reasonable.
Right.
And there may be, you know, some limit, you know, what the limitation is and that.
Yeah.
Cause I don't remember what the limitation was on the, on the neighborhood stabilization.
Well, I think, wasn't there like a buyback provision? I mean, it was like you had to offer it, you had to...
I believe so, yeah.
It was like you were giving an option, you were giving an option back to the city or whoever it was, whoever it was.
Wasn't that a 10-year program? You had to live in it, if you give it up, then all, all the money was in there.
I don't know how many years it was, I can't remember.
You're close, it's either five or 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's five or 10.
Now, that was about the same time as the house that Danny Vincent bought. Is that same, is it, is that the same program?
Ah, that was a little bit different.
It was a, it was a...
And you're right, it was the same time, it was the same time.
Buyers, because I had a friend that tried to buy it and they were told that they made too much money.
Yeah, like income and how long.
And I didn't know if there was a stipulation on how, how long you had to own it, because...
I think it was part of the same program.
I thought it was.
Our, our former clerk treasurer has texted me and she said, it's the NSP program, 10-year.
10-year, Monty, Monty, Monty's doing this. So it is 10 years. I was gonna say, who was that? See how much you fall?
Yeah, okay.
Good guess, Zach, good job, Larry.
So, so I, yeah, so that, I guess that would be the question, that if we can mimic, maybe possibly mimic the conditions in that NSP program.
I think that would work.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's...
Well, it sounds like, so you want a chance to look into that a little bit? Yes, okay. While we do that, and then we'll, we'll reconvene in the next meeting regarding that subject, that sounds fair.
What's our expectations? Are we trying to acquire houses and have them potentially for auction, sale, gift, whatever, this year?
We're not, yeah, that'd be great to have them, any ones that we deem available to be flipped this year, yeah. We're not, I don't want to misconstrue the fact, we're not trying to acquire properties. But as properties become available that aren't taken care of, then yes, we're, we're trying to get those, yeah. It's not like we're out there aggressively looking for properties, yeah. We just want properties to be...
Four or five that are being talked about, about giving to redevelopment so that we can move on these homes.
So there's a chance like we could get a grouping of five to seven and then set like an October date, whether gift, auction, whatever?
Some of them, Nate, you could set a July date to auction them off and people would be absolutely ecstatic. They're calling every other day.
Yes, yeah, I think, I think we could.
That's why we need to agree with this.
We're literally waiting on you guys to decide how we're going to facilitate this.
Yeah, I think we can auction each, as they come along.
Oh, but again, it's gotta be where we've got, because we don't want it to sit for four more years, cause, yeah.
And, and everybody understands it, it's, it's new. But we've got six or eight people, six or eight families, six or eight groups wanting to start rehabilitating some of these homes.
And I've had calls as well.
We're doing, it's catching on.
Yeah, so do we just need to like start a list of what we want? Like, well, 18 months to flip it or live it as a primary? Inspected before it's purchased by the ordinance officer and inspected before it's inhabited by the ordinance officer? That would be my couple stipulations.
That's what I'm putting out to you guys. If you guys, I mean, this is our chance to wrap, you know...
Yeah, I, I would like to see like a detailed plan that they have exactly what they wanna do with, with the property, a timeline attached to that, proof of funds that they can actually follow through with those goals. Along with that, I think is, it makes reasonable sense.
I think Brandon's got a good point on particularly proof of funds. And, and I wouldn't, I'd, I'd like to say timeframe of, of something closer to a year. Because we can always give people more time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, with that timeline, there's an option for an extension.
We can always give extensions.
Kind of like the park hours.
If they're making progress. But I don't, but I'd, I'd like to be able to be in control of those extensions.
So one year, proof of funds to do the work? What was the third, you had a third one, did you?
Proof of funds like either cash and bank or...
Like a detailed plan of what they're gonna do.
A detailed plan, okay, so renovation plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think as a, I didn't, I didn't really have any, and I didn't have any direct dealings with them other than just a few occasions that they came to my store. But the company that rehabbed the house on the corner of South and Howard.
The one that just sold?
Yeah, the one that just sold the big blue house, this blue now.
Yeah, nice kids.
Probably just over a year that it took to do that.
They were just finishing out their...
And I'm gonna say that that company did it on their, in their, it was, it was a company deal and they did it on their spare time.
We watched them do that.
It was, it was real long ago.
They did a wonderful job on it. It was a nice home.
Taylor Homes is...
Taylor, yeah, Taylor, I couldn't think of the name.
That's awesome.
And I, I sold them a few things, but not very much. But Taylor, they did that as a time, as, as a time available thing. And they still did it in, in around a year. So if somebody has, I think that's not unrealistic at all to have that much of an expectation. And if somebody's really serious about doing it, then they'll do that. And the biggest thing we wanna keep away from is anybody just accumulating houses. We have, we've had that problem with tax sale properties. And one of the things that I'll talk about, we talked about a little bit earlier today was that one of the problems you have with, with the tax sale properties is some people will go in and buy a tax certificate on a house for $200 and let it sit. Because they just, and they just accumulate them like old, like they're collecting toys or garden tractors or something like that. The only problem is they're sitting there in a city block, you know?
And that was my idea with the whole, you have to have a plan of what you're gonna do. Just even stop and think about the whole process all the way through. And whether you have the money to actually do it. Cause people in those tax sales, I mean, I don't know if it's spur of the moment, but they'll, they'll wanna acquire the property, maybe something in mind, but not fully thought it through. And that, that causes them to hesitate enough to really think through the process.
Do you think it's fair to say that we ought to have somewhat of a template for that plan to give them? As far as what our expectations are? We, just a checklist of you need to have this, 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 in terms of this is what your financing is, this is what your timeline and develop a checklist.
Not a bad idea to give them a rubric, some sort of...
What your resources are, what your plan is.
Ryan, do you have those suggestions written down by chance, or do you want me to send those to you?
Can you send them to me?
I'll send them to you.
I, well, I was, yeah, I was, I'm still writing down a 10-year restrictive covenant.
Okay. Cause what ideal, let's plan to vote on this the next meeting and the final draft. Let's get this, get this addressed quickly.
So here, here's one initial thought I'm having. How do we open this up for people to bid on if they've never seen the house, to put a plan together?
I, I would propose that we just have a Saturday where we go and, like, we have 15 on the condemnation list. They advised us today at the Board of Works that we're potentially looking at an addition of 20 more to that list. So, and Chad and I have already taken an afternoon and walked some people that are interested in flipping these homes through some of the houses. So, you know, what, once we have control of them, we just schedule a couple of days where, hey, we're gonna be walking through these, these five properties. And then the next day, we're gonna walk through these five properties.
So we're gonna open them in the front door?
Yes, open the front door.
And then we schedule an auction day and you just auction them all.
Okay.
So, so I can, I can see if you had, let's say, let's say we're just dealing with one property. You have a property, you have a, you have a available due date to go through and get information. And then, then let's say two, two weeks later, we have an auction. That way it gives people an amount of time. And we, and that's, I'm just throwing a number in terms of two weeks. But let's say two weeks later, then you have, then we have our auction and you present your, you present your plan, present your bid. Yeah.
I, I agree, I, I, I have no problem with that.
We've gotta get away from this.
So are we saying then that you, I mean, the idea of the auction is that you present a plan before you're eligible to bid? Is that what your thought is there?
Well, cause I was thinking it was just up for sale.
It's gonna be real hard for bidders.
That's what I was thinking.
With so many houses available, I mean, who's gonna develop like 20 plans?
Well, it depends on how many, how many...
I would say we go to auction and within 60 days have to have the plan approved.
There you go.
And then your time starts.
That's better.
60 days, 90 days, 30?
Just, it, it also depends on how many you're putting up at once. If you're not, if you're doing them on an individual basis, we don't necessarily have to have six houses. I'd be inclined to say...
Gentlemen, I'm, I'm not even saying it has to be an auction.
Right.
I'm just throwing that word out for terminology. It can just be a sealed bid that's accepted on any of these 10 properties.
A sealed bid auction, I was trying to find a way that we could potentially generate a little funds to tear down the houses that, we know this isn't habitable. Well, we just got 10 grand for selling these 10 houses, let's take that 10 grand. And Bulldozer's the one that, there's no way we can fix it. And then it's not coming out of city funds, is, is my perspective.
I, I don't agree with you, but I would like to, this is just my perspective. Starting this, I think it's going to, to struggle to get started and generate enthusiasm. If we come out right away and these houses are being auctioned up or bid up to $5,000, $10,000, I think that process may shy some people away. If it starts at a couple hundred dollars like it did in Winchester a few years ago and people gain momentum and they get one under their belt and then they can flip it. And then the auction starts to grow a little bit. I agree, we can generate some money to demo the babbins, but...
My thought was auction starts at a dollar. And it may take us three years to get to 10 grand to demolish this house.
I just wanna make sure everybody understands that we're talking $100 if these things out of our...
Well, that's what, yeah, I think, and that's the key, is that I'd rather, I'd rather they use their dollars to renovate the house than purchase the house. And it just, in, in my business, I've been exposed to a tremendous number of people that paid way too much for a property and couldn't afford to renovate it. And you, it's kinda heartbreaking sometimes to have to deal with that where they've done this and they're, they're stuck. And you, it's kind of heartbreaking sometimes to have to deal with that where they've done this and they're, they're stuck.
On the timeline subject, don't you have some downtown buildings that were basically gifted to people? Do they have a timeline to do something with them? Because I know one building in particular that, that somebody was, was, I'm gonna say gifted. He didn't give much for it, he gave anything for it, and he hasn't done anything to it.
Not aware of what building we're talking about and I'm not aware of the problem, the situation.
I just know the building was, the guy didn't do anything for the building and he hasn't done anything to it.
Okay, that's been before my, when I started.
But what, from the city?
I'm not sure the address.
Just see me after the meeting and I'll, we probably already have a plan on some of these vacant buildings downtown. We can probably.
Something that somebody has already been given? I'm just wondering about a timeline, whether, whether when you give somebody something or somebody has something like that, is there a timeline for them as well, just like what you're talking about?
I mean, answer your question going forward, there would be, for any building we would have, yes. They would be expected to have X amount of done by Y date.
You know what I'm talking about?
Which, I don't know which building you're talking about.
I'm talking about one that you gave to Dwight Edwards.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know. Yeah.
I don't know which building that is.
It's two doors down from, from, from the new barn. It's the Ducky's building, isn't it?
The old Ducky's building.
The one next to it, yeah.
Yeah.
Or is it the old one?
I think it is Ducky's. The other one belongs to Victor, the one in between belongs to Victor. But I know that he's had it for a while and I know that he hasn't done one thing to it. And he offered to sell it to me. And she said, why should I buy? Isn't there a timeline on that as well?
Well, that's, I don't think we had a stipulation timeline on that, so we.
There was funds attached to it.
Part of the reason why we're talking about it now, I mean, but.
There was funds attached to it?
So much money had to be invested.
Yeah.
I don't know the specifics, but I know money had to be invested.
And in a certain amount of time?
I don't know.
I'd like to check into that.
That, that's why we're talking about having a timeline associated with any sort of transfer. Because people don't accept the property and just sit on it.
And that's exactly what's being done.
Well, um, let's have that, I'll get that information, send what Brandon suggested and I'll email that to you. And then, and then we'll, like, again, we'll seek to vote on some type of finished product in the next meeting.
I'll find out, I don't know what the details.
And then, uh, the next one is a bridge quote. And this is a really cool thing. This is the bridge out of Harder Park.
Are we looking at the TV?
The what? Or we, no, we're not looking at the TV, sorry.
I wasn't sure if we were gonna see a picture of it.
It's a diagram, but.
Well, yeah, there's a diagram in your, in your packet. And let me, let me see if I can pull that up. So Community Christmas, if you're aware, the, they, we, we put up the, the covered bridge, if you will. It's the, just metal poles with the overhang and they're wrapped in lights. That's a job to put up and take down. I can honestly say, I, I can definitely say nobody in here's done that except for Larry and me because I do it every year and I've never seen one of your faces out there. So you'll have to take my word for it, that's extremely hard because in the wintertime or when we try to get them out after winter or late winter, they get water down there from the ice and then they won't come up. Imagine something that's suctioned really bad, like a few feet in the ground.
And everything.
Yeah, the whole concrete starts to come up with it. And so it's, it's amazing, none of us have heard of it yet. So, um, so I had the thought it would be cool if we had a covered bridge out there because it would not only, if you look at the contours of the ground at Harder Park, everything goes down in toward that valley. It's like a central focus. And covered bridges are, and this is probably just me, I just, I think they're really pretty and they're eye popping. And there's a way that we've actually, because this man being Larry Ansco is, you know, the founder of Community Christmas and, and the reason why we have the lights up there every year at the park. He's, he was the one that built the barn, the Community Christmas barn, that stores all of our lights and stores all kinds of other stuff. And, and that's, even after Community Christmas someday, you know, God forbid, but someday if it goes away, that barn will still be there for the community to use, including for the soccer concession stands and everything, so. But we would love to build a covered bridge. And if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to you, Larry, because you've done a lot of late work.
Most of all, we're trying to do, the bridge that's out there now, they just finished redoing the embufflement walls on it because they were disintegrating. So this bridge now is structurally sound. What I want to do with a covered bridge, again, this is another one of these deals. I don't know if anybody's seen the Indiana's covered bridge. They have different places throughout that you can drive to and go see them and everything else. Why not have them come to Union City?
Exactly.
Now, it's not gonna be a historic building, but it's still gonna be a covered bridge.
God, it has historic wood.
Yeah. We, we will not attach it to anything concerning the bridge. So it's gonna be self-supported by, just like building a pole barn. There'll be eight posts, four on each side, forty-foot span to get across the creek on both sides, twenty feet on either side of that. And we're gonna put rough over, it'll be covered, lights on the inside all year round, other lights on the outside when Chad and I can get them put on there as quick as possible when we're in October.
Question, will these specifics, dimensions, I don't know what you want to call it, will it allow us to attach to the websites that promote covered bridges in Indiana?
Uh, I don't see why not because again, there are some of the covered bridges, it's unlike a state historic.
Yeah.
But there's other ones that's just in, if you look at the state book.
Well, I've, I've been through the covered bridge festival area over, it's over on the other side of the state, Brazil, Indiana. There's like fifteen of them within thirty miles, like there's a boat of them.
And again, not all of them are historic.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, you know, we wouldn't just put our name in the state book.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
There's another one, it's moving right here.
No, this doesn't qualify.
Too.
Right.
We're already in there. Yeah, the idea is to have it lit literally head to toe. The inside will be glowing and the outside will be glowing because we want it to really pop. And, um, yeah, that's my home screen. Uh, it's funny because I'm not looking at my home screen right now, I'm looking at my slide.
It looks like it's a, two monitors. Can you drag it over to one side or the other?
Uh, I have nothing to.
Well, if you're putting that drawing.
This has just been a smashing success with the technology today.
Practice.
I'm quite stoned, but anyway.
The, the bridge will be like I say, eighty feet long by about twenty-eight feet wide. The reg, the regular drive will still go through the bridge if they need to work on it. There's plenty of room for it because it'll be minimum of fourteen feet high above the road. So for any repair that needs to be done to the bridge, it can still be done without interfering with the building.
Ladder truck goes through there.
Ladder truck goes through there, everything, so Santa Claus can still be delivered to the, to the shutter house there.
So it looks like there's a quote for materials included in the packet here, but was there a quote or bid asked for to actually erect the, the bridge?
It's, it's already paid for.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Labor's donated and Community Christmas has pledged $5,000 this year and then $2,000 after this coming year's gate receipts. So that'd be $7,000.
Plus the, we had talked about having the Lions Club. They always sponsor things for the community. That's gonna be a project, they're gonna give money. We'd just like to put an email up where it says the Lions Club, which I'm a member of. Chad is talking about a plaque that has his uncle's name on it, Joyce Miller, which was a Lions Club member. Uh, just whatever, it's just again, it's another one of those so-called gimmicks that cost money to do, but yet it's still gonna benefit the community.
Should bring people to town to spend money, so that's perfect.
So we're gonna spend money that somebody else from maybe Troy or Pickler or who knows where give to us last year at Christmas time. Okay?
I want to clarify out here one thing about the quote and the dollar amount is that, that, that doesn't include concrete.
Right, I understand.
And, and I'm not sure what else, I mean, you, you can expand with the rest of the council if there's what else there would be in there.
If there's other expenses like that, the Community Christmas will probably pay for most of it. Uh, we, we, we was offering, like I say, we was wanting to build a pole barn out there. We was willing over a five to ten-year period to pay it off anyway. Well, thanks to our council, they kind of give us a leeway. Well, I'm not done. I want to get it back in there and I will pay for it somehow.
So.
Community Christmas, like I say, it's, it's not my money, it's not your money. Might be if you give money to it. But we're gonna put lights out there, we're gonna have another display area, but it's gonna be a permanent, it's a cool stadium. Everybody gets to enjoy it.
I like the idea. My only concern is, is the park needs ditched.
The what now?
Park needs ditched.
Yes.
Very, very badly.
Yes.
It would help you guys put lights up, it would help you get them down, it wouldn't be muddy.
There, there is areas at the park, and we've already talked to Brad or I have, the sewage plants got out of how many tons of dirt. There's low areas that just need to fill up. The ditch along Winchester Pike just needs to be cleaned out, opened up, get the water from the west to go to the creek.
Is that city or is that county?
Couple places under the road, the tiles, tin whistles are crushed or they're this high and the water's down here. We gotta get them down where they need. So there may be some salt cuts going to happen in there, but it's actually going out there and ditching through the park. We've already got dead trees out there. We need to start planting some new trees.
But it would be pointless to plant the trees unless it's gonna be at least used ten months out of the year.
What's this?
The park. We need it to be ditched for it to be used. That, that's mine.
I want to tell you something right now and I'm, I'll put my life on it. There's more people using this park today than there are twenty years ago.
Oh, I a hundred percent agree.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Because when the industry's left last time, the only thing we had that was an asset to our community was the park. So that's, and again, I'm a stupid idiot because I created Frankenstein.
I love the idea. My motion is let's ditch it and do this.
Well.
That's my motion.
I appreciate it, but we're got a bunch of dirt out here that's gonna be given to us. We need to fill up the low areas to stop the water from laying there. That will help tremendously. And that stuff, we have equipment here in town to use to get that accomplished.
Yeah, and I, I know Brad has been out there within the last sixty days looking at things that can be done by our local workers here. I know that we've worked with the county on working on some of the ditches out there on the west end of the park. It's just a, a process of having the material and the time to put it all together and, and start making headway on it. So I, I think both can be done.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's a priority because.
I was with Brad when, when we walked through the park and talked about some of the things that can be done to redirect some of the water that's already standing.
Yeah, it was either two or three years ago that they had, was it Swederman, I think, or Greenville come out and did the survey of.
Yeah.
Because he was out there about three weekends in a row on the weekend.
Thirty thousand dollars to ditch it, some trees would die, but he basically assured that there won't be standing water after it rained.
Right.
And in my mind, that's a wise investment to make sure that park is usable. It rains at three o'clock today, I want it at park usable eight AM tomorrow morning. I'm just trying to make it usable.
But that's back to the Community Christmas and the covered bridge. That's what we're looking at and I'd like to get started as soon as I get this God-forsaken house finished. And as soon as I get it done, I'm ready to work.
So the fourteen, seven, twenty-one, forty-four, we know that five is already spoken for from Community Christmas.
Thousand.
And then two at the fall, and then you said a thousand from.
Thousand from Lions Club.
So, so that's eight, so basically we're asking for $6,721.44, which is less than fifty percent of the bridge, the materials to, to erect the covered bridge.
I move that we approve $6,721.44 to go towards constructing a new bridge? Well, excuse me, a covered portion of the existing bridge.
We have a first and we have a second?
I'll second it.
Jan, you would, we'll call them?
I have a question.
Yeah, shoot, sorry.
Where's that money gonna come from?
Projects funds.
Okay, I need that, that's all.
Gotcha.
Um, Brandon Almore?
Yes.
Nate Complin?
Yes.
And Ice?
Yes.
Tito Freys?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Um, okay, the eco-tax abatement should be in your packets. Monte, I apologize, you still can't, you can hear me, can't you? You can't, you can't hear me really. Okay. You can't speak to this.
Go ahead and find out, you can check out the right, my paper's got messed up. Jan, do you have anything you wanted to add real quick? So I saw.
They're just presenting this CF1, which they do every year for their activity.
Give me thoughts or any questions?
Just a, just an update of the, our annual approval.
What's it done?
You know, this was the, what was the, what's the origination date of that? It's, it's 2017, I think.
Yes, eleven thirteen seventeen.
Yeah, when we first initiated that. And that was, uh, the tax abatement on improvements at, at that point. It was a C and G infrastructure system, I believe.
So are there any questions?
I'm proud of each, so I can't.
Sorry, what's that again?
For us noobs, can you re-explain this again?
It's from two thousand, sorry, yeah, do you guys have these in your packets?
Yes. I'm looking at it, just trying to understand it.
Look at the, um, you see location, description of proposed project. It has to do with the improvements they made manufacturing logical or logistical distribution and IT equipment. And that information can be found, that's the description of the property. And then if you look at.
It should be S P one.
Compliance, yeah. What the proposed value of the project.
Okay, let's, let's go back to simplified. What is this doing again?
It's just a tax, just a tax abatement.
Just a base.
On the improvements they made.
I understand, but a lot of people here and a lot of people on TV don't. So I'm just trying to get us to get there because I couldn't explain.
So was there two parts to it? Was there a tax abatement and then there was the loan or grant portion?
That's, yeah, that's a different.
Yeah, it's a different, yeah, that's a different ball of wax.
Yeah, this is similar to what we've done with, say, Frank Miller.
Frank Miller's, yeah, okay, I knew there was another.
They made significant investments and capital improvements and this gives a, a abatement of taxes for a period of time, so we.
On those improvements?
On the, just on the improvements. Not, not any of the existing.
Not anything else.
For, for.
Previous to that. For a pre-specified amount of time, which that's what I'm trying to find out.
This is on the portion. So is that also the case for this one?
Yeah, right. On the personal property.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
I thought it was commercial property.
Well, it's.
Well, the commercial property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not the rental. See where the proposed.
Five.
We can't make those.
It's on the, it's on the signature page, Chad.
But that's when you say back to 2017, so this would be the fourth year or third year?
Third, should be third.
No, the fourth year, correct?
I think it's the third year.
Oh, third year. Oh, because it started at the end of 17. Okay, so we'd be in the third year of five-year agreement.
Right.
That's what it is.
So, so to clarify, yeah, clarify to the public after the five-year period, then it goes on the tax rolls and it's taxed as.
So it was part of the audit to ensure that those improvements have been made?
That they're needing to be made. No, that wasn't included in that. This was, this is just the, they're the, they just, the, this, in terms of this is the, just the, it just happens to be coming up at the same time, but the, the, they, they certify that the, those assets are still there, this, you know.
Gotcha.
So forth.
As reported to be.
As reported, yes. So it's just a, just a annual update. We have to review it annually and, and approve that, that they've met their, met their obligations. Which, they're, they're still operating and, and still in force, so that basically they've met their obligation at that point.
I have a question. Now, when you look at this on section four, under manufacturing equipment, it says estimated on SB one plus values of proposed project, I see $2,758,000. Then when actual I see, uh, under values of proposed project, fifty-nine, seven, one, seven. Is, what does that mean? Does that mean that they didn't actually do what they were planning on doing or what, what does that mean?
That's, I'm not sure.
Not, I can't answer that. Cannot answer that.
Same thing on IT equipment. So, from 475,000 down to 10,336, so I'm just like, what is that? And the logistics goes from 475,000 to zero. So, is it something that had been planned, and that's what the tax abatement is for? But that they have not done, or have only partially done?
Well, let's keep in perspective. You're still only abating what was actually done.
Yeah.
You're not abating the 2.7 million, because that's not been spent. You're only abating what the actual assessed value is. So, even if they spent $1, you're only going to abate the taxes of $1,000.
That was kind of what I was getting at with my question. You had a lot of questions.
So, you're actually in the end abating a lot less than what you would have if you had made those.
Yeah.
So, this is a normal abatement, right? There's been investment, we're trying to help our interest in the city, and so we provide a tax abatement for five to 10 years.
Five years back.
Five years in this case.
Yeah, yeah. Which was, again, it was November 17, or November 11th, no, November 27, 2017, sorry.
And so this had been for five years, and this is the fourth year, so we're just, what are we doing? We're just renewing it?
Yeah.
As usual?
Still got two years left on it.
Correct.
It's just a review of the audit that was done.
A vote to approve five years, or three years.
Not an audit, just an abatement.
Okay, so what is the next step?
Well, there's documentation provided.
Just a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, I motion to approve the resolution of the continuance of the tax abatement for Eco Vehicles.
I second.
We have a first and second. Jan, if you would, roll call vote.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Nathan Coughlin?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Tito Farias?
Yes.
All right. And lastly, the eco-audit, which was the agreement. You should have a contract from, that was also, what? That was in 2016, so the year earlier. And then the proposed repayment terms. And I just, I opened it up to council for, you've had a chance to review this, and I checked with our city attorney, and nothing in the proposed repayment terms contradicts or invalidates the contract.
I had a few thoughts, and I'm wondering if I need to take my mask off to talk here. I did a kind of a long analysis, and I just, I do want to make just some comments, just so people understand what's going on. I don't like the contract. But the reason is that when you provide incentives to a business to do a number of things, and then usually when they comply, in this case, right, these are, you can forgive the loaner, or you can allow them to keep the grant and things like that. It's known as clawback is not, like, not required in the contract. But when you give a business an incentive to say, in this case, create 200 jobs, okay? And you give them X number of, X number of thousands of dollars, whatever. If they comply, they can keep them. I mean, that to me seems like the natural thing. So, if they comply partially, then they should keep that part. The way the contract is written is not if they, is exactly the opposite of that. That if they comply with this amount, then this is the part, this is the proportion of what they've received in incentives that they return. So, to me, that doesn't make any sense. I mean, the contract is written that they should reimburse, that they could reimburse, or they might be required to reimburse, the proportion of the incentives that they achieved. For me, it should have been the opposite. They should, if they're, they should reimburse what they did not achieve, right? Because then the incentive didn't... And if that happened, just saying, if that happened, then, I mean, I could go through all the math. They would be, we would require a reimbursement of $432,000. But since they already repaid, but since Eco Vehicles has already paid $350,000 of the loan, that was also part of the incentives, he would only still need to pay $82,000, okay? So, it's my opinion that that would be a fair amount to expect. But it's also important to explain to everybody, if we follow the contract, which says you pay back based on what you've achieved, then, let's see, he achieved 28%. So, 56 jobs were created out of the 200 that had been promised, or that had been planned. I think we know the reasons, right? You know, very logical, very logical reasons. He had all, you know, we had all the reasons to believe that he would have done that, but 56 ended up being created. That's 28%. So, the 28% is what he achieved. So, we follow the contract. That's the amount that can be reimbursed, right? And my calculations is if we follow the contract to the letter, then the city, because he's already paid $350,000, then actually the city owes Rob Liggins $182,000. We don't have money back. I know. If I can go through the math if you'd like me to. I just don't think I can, you know, spend an hour talking about it. But it's very important for people to understand that the contract does not require the city to ask for money back. Right? There's no requirement for the city to have that clawback. The clawback is completely optional. So, just to people, for people to understand, the outcome here is a negotiated thing. Rob has already paid $350,000, that was from loans from Edit Funds, back. He's already paid that. And so now that the, kind of some math, to me, the math makes no sense. But in any case, we're getting another $12,000. We're getting another $12,000.
Let's tear down a house.
So, I say that, we take that and smile and move on.
No, I appreciate that.
Some popular things to note. We still have 56 jobs versus our other large company left at the end of May. Rob and his family live here. I know him personally, and I know they do a lot of good things that are seen and unseen. I think it's an asset to our community. I...
Well, it looks like it went from 24 jobs to 56, so, I mean...
It still was an interest.
You didn't hit the 200.
This contract was written funky. I wasn't here for it. It is what it is.
And there's some interesting things on the horizon that, if people have noticed the sign on the other side of the road at the old interstate transport building, that Eco Vehicles is going to be working with the project in that facility, so there's other, there's optimism with other things to come.
That's encouraging. That's good. Well, I mean, you guys feel like you're appointing to, to...
So, you're looking for a motion to accept the...
To accept.
To accept the results of the audit? I'll move we accept the results of the Eco Vehicle loan audit.
I'll second that.
We have a first and second. Jan, if you would, roll call vote.
Question?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
The audit is for also that recommendation of the payment of $12,000?
That was for the jobs. It was for the jobs created. They had to validate or verify the jobs created according to the contract. Then I submitted the, I submitted the contract and their proposal to our attorney to make sure that it was legit, and there was nothing that would be in defiance of or in contradictory to what we'd already agreed upon.
So, this is what we're voting on? That we accept that? Okay.
We're voting on the proposal, right, of paying us?
Yes, correct, correct, correct.
Yes.
So, we have a first and second. If you would, roll call vote.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Nathan Coughlin?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Tito Farias?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to watch just because I'm trying to deliberate whether we have a video, we can show it on. Do we have any visitors wishing to address the council at this time?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you would, please stand up and state your name and address.
My name is Jessica Holt, 514 girl. And I'm wanting to know when you guys are planning on tearing down the home that's beside of me that's on the list to be tore down? Because I have been paying more in three years because of the bugs that are in that place, and I'm kind of getting tired of it. And I didn't know if the city wanted to start paying for the bug repair, or they're going to get rid of it.
What address is this?
That'd be 518.
Alley, it's right on the alley, right behind Wesleyan.
I spent thousands.
Oh, on...
Pearl Street.
On Pearl.
Oh, okay.
From the lot that Wesley tore the house down.
Yeah.
Across Wesley.
No, across the alley.
Inside the alley from, yeah.
Okay. Is it, I don't know, the combination was right in front of me. Do you guys...
It is already back. The city owns it, 100%.
We do own it?
Yeah, we own it.
Oh, is that the...
Is that correct?
Yeah, Monty, is that the asbestos issue? Oh, crap. Yeah.
Because I've asked Monty a couple times.
Let me get Monty on speaker phones. Monty, I'm going to call you.
Unbelievable.
Hey, brother? Okay. Yeah. Could you, you've heard the beginning of this conversation, the 518 West Pearl, that was, the asbestos was one of the roadblocks initially in us getting that demo, correct?
Yeah, the IDEM requires us to have asbestos checked now before we tear it, carpet it out. So, we had Airtight Products do an asbestos inspection in there, and they didn't find asbestos in the plaster and some of the ceiling tile. So, their estimate on the removal, that was nine, well over $9,000.
Okay. And we don't have a demo bid yet, correct?
No, I think we...
Yes, you do.
...considered taking it down with our equipment.
Oh, okay.
Logan wrote it. I made sure.
Okay. Well, and he even said, we consider taking it down with our equipment.
Same with the one on Sycamore?
I have no idea.
Been hearing that for two years.
Yeah.
Even with asbestos?
No, the one on Sycamore, the city was going to take down at some point. It's still sitting there.
But I mean, can this be taken down by us, even with asbestos?
Well, the asbestos has been remedied.
Yeah, we have to mitigate the asbestos.
So, do we have a quote for the asbestos? We do have a quote, obviously, for the asbestos removal. Do we have the ability to acquire another quote for that, or are we limited in who can actually perform that for us right now?
As long as it's a certified asbestos mitigation company, I can have Shroyer Brothers or someone quote it also.
Okay. Well, you have my word. We will vote for the asbestos removal in the next meeting, and as the second the asbestos removal is done, we will level that place.
Good, because I'm tired of that.
Don't blame me.
Those people, those people that moved in there has been looking at the house across the street from me that's for rent that's voice long. Yeah. And our neighborhood doesn't need that. They need to get them out here. They've already trashed the one that's on the bomb by the Nazarene. Where the preacher used to, like, the helper?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're over there now, trashing that. Yeah. They need to be run back to Greenville.
Okay. If you see any ordinance violations, I mean, anything, I mean...
Well, I don't, I just know because I have a client that lives down there, and she tells me all the time all this stuff.
Please have her call the city office, or stop in, or get online at unioncity-in.com, either one of those three, and let us know.
Yeah, because they spread the bugs all around everywhere.
And we will, we will cite them for any, any ordinance violation that they commit, because we all have a responsibility to play in this community.
Well, the thing here is with the dogs, you know, all these people have dogs, and then it's breeding dogs, and no one's fixing dogs, and we have no shots, no one's required in Union City. Why don't we start requiring people to vaccinate their animals and take that money and put it in a thing? I mean, nobody forces that here either.
Well, that's something we could bridge with our animal control officer and...
You can't get animal control.
I'm not sure.
He's just hired, we just now have.
For the whole time.
Remember our whole debacle we got stuck in a few years back where the county, where we, where we were prohibited from having our dog registration ordinance and so forth because of the time?
Yes.
I'm not sure whether that would include, in terms of whether we could have a vaccination ordinance or anything like that or not. I don't know.
Because it'd be more money for the city, and then they could fix these feral animals.
Maybe we need to look into that.
Can you make a requirement for a tag and make a tagging requirement?
Well, that was the problem. We tried to do that, and the way the laws were written, the county, that, that authority went away from the county, and then there was a certain deadline, a certain amount of time that, and we were unaware of it. County didn't make us aware of it. That timeline passed to the point where you couldn't pass an ordinance any longer to do it. We had an ordinance in play and couldn't pass it because the state law said that we couldn't pass an ordinance after this certain deadline. It was insane.
So, we don't have an ordinance that you have to have your dog back? Gravy?
No, nothing. That's crazy. Yeah, and the people that I'm talking about, that's why I'm referring to, is she's not allowed to own animals, and they're selling animals on these rubbish sites and stuff, and they have tons of them down there, and they keep them in the basements. That's one thing.
What's that address?
Call Shelly.
She can't do nothing. She can't do nothing.
No, our animal, our animal ordinance officer would be the one. I'm sorry, Monty, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a state law that the dogs have to be vaccinated, and they have cited for, for having an unvaccinated animal. So, I mean, it's not, I don't know that you can go door to door and say, hey, is your dog vaccinated? But if they catch a dog and find that it's not vaccinated, then, then that's a state code, a state code.
Okay, thank you.
I think that would be a question to present with, to have a conversation with Kobe and Gavin, our ordinance officer, who is ordinance analyst.
There's Fred and Harvo and everything else around there.
And see whether they can, Kobe may be able to find some, some way to work that in and do something about that. I agree. I think you're 100% right on that.
We don't know an address. What's the street?
It's Hickory. It's kind of corner from the Nazarene Church.
Oh, that's right.
You don't know exactly where I'm talking about. They got a rebel flag hanging outside and all different kind of stuff. You don't know. They're a treat, like, by.
Thank you.
Yeah. But I just, I know they're trashing that house. That house is going to have to be tore down now too, probably. Because the one beside me, they took the walls out, they took the flooring out. Oh, they're going to make it a better place.
Monty, yeah, we'll go ahead and secure that second bid for the asbestos removal, so we can have the council vote on that. There goes the $12,000 we just got.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I just think they're a match, but...
So, we will be voting on that in the next council meeting. Do we have any other, anybody else wishing to present to council, or any questions, as you said? If not, the date of our next council meeting will be in two weeks, actually, three weeks. Yeah, three weeks, July 13th at 6:00 PM, and the date of the next board or public works meeting will be July 13th also, and that's at 1:00 PM. And tune in for that next council meeting, because we will have a fantastic video that we will highlight about our high school that was produced by our Kiss TV program, and it's a phenomenal video, and that will be aired at our next council meeting. I hereby entertain a motion for German.
Yes.
Oh, those are your favorite second pronouns?
Yeah.
Sycamore.
Thank you.